We're at six thirty-three. Good to have everyone here tonight. I'm glad you're here to participate in the city council meeting. Hopefully, if you want to speak, you already have signed up the sign-up sheet. If you did not sign up, please come forward and do so, and Liz will have this as we get started tonight. Looks like we have three to start this. So, let's all begin the meeting tonight by standing for the indication led by Terry Sayer. And remain standing with me for the pledge of allegiance, please.
Most gracious and heavenly father, we're so thankful for this opportunity to serve you and serve the city. We thank you for those that gave their lives so that we can have this opportunity. And as we go on tonight, we ask you to open our hearts and open our minds, and let each and every one of us know that it is all right to disagree, but to do so in a manner that is pleasing in your sight and to the best benefit of our city and our residents of this city. In Christ's precious and holy name, we do pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. City clerk would read the roll call, please.
Thomas Evers. Eric Schein.
Here.
Terry Sayer.
Here.
Jeanette Lassiter.
Here.
Keith Williams.
Here.
Kendall Stuckey.
Here.
Dean Bitner.
Here.
Paula Allred.
Here.
Mayor, we have quorum.
Thank you. Very one would take the liberty to peruse the consent agenda items. I know you've already looked at them, but be sure and kind of peruse them again. If anything needs to be pointed out, any corrections to the minutes, or any questions about the financial statement, please bring those forward. I'll give you a few minutes to look at that.
I have a question, mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
On the street fund checking account. I'm just curious, what kind of street projects are being delayed?
The McClure Street project. We have applied for some STPA special funding back in the spring when we were ready to go with that. And the regional planning office should be making a decision upon distribution to help towards engineering and right-of-way acquisition on parts of that project. We do not have the answer yet, so...
And that's a good portion of what's not been done?
That's... You cannot proceed with federal money pending on a grant of that nature.
Well, I was just curious, because it's almost three million dollars.
Right.
It's not been expended.
That portion of it. Cindy, would you have a further explanation on that? Okay.
There seems like a couple of the other areas and expenses are pretty low compared to what we've got budgeted. I was just curious as to what's being delayed, or...
Well, that's a big portion of the delay right there. Now, part of that money that you may be referring to is the 264, Highway 264 extension to the west that we have money set aside for. Which line item are you looking at?
Well, I was looking at street projects, but also, street maintenance and operations and maintenance are pretty low compared to the budget. I was just curious if there was... I'm sure that explains a good portion of it.
Jeanette? If you want me to... I'd be happy to get a breakdown for you.
Okay.
I don't have it with me, but I'll get that in.
I was just curious about what was missing, what's not being done, and why.
Well, pretty much what the mayor said.
That's the bulk of it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we were led to believe that this funding would come relatively soon, mid... late spring, mid-summer, in that range. But there's been delays in the process on that. And so, that's one of the reasons we have not started it, McClure Street project, because we would like to try to be a recipient of some of that money and stretch that funding out a little bit further. Any other question about the budget or corrections to the minutes? Why don't we go ahead and let the record show that Thomas Evers has now joined us.
We get a special announcement. Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
A second? We have a motion by Jeanette and a second by Eric. If that's by voice, vote, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any pauses, would you like to sign? Thank you. This is our time of public forum, and it looks like we have three different speakers tonight that would like to address the council. Please state your name when you come to the microphone and your address. And then, you have two minutes to speak on the public forum aspects, okay? You want to go first, Guy?
Thank you, mayor. My name's Guy Schumaker. I live at 315 Center Drive in my town called Lowell. Now, I got two things. Number one, mayor, I have talked with the various people. I'd like for you to give me a call tomorrow morning around 10 o'clock to... about the flags for the Senior Citizen Center, which I think I've got the American Legion talked into buying and donating at the time of the grand opening, or whether you're going to have. Number two, the fire chief just came up and apologized. He screwed up like a T-five at an NCO meeting. Last month, I contacted him about a wheelchair. Martha, would you bring it out, please? Bring me the wheelchair out. I bought this wheelchair, brand new, for Senior Citizen Center. And lo and behold, a gentleman from the Senior Citizen Center who works over it came over, and he plopped his butt in and kapow, it broke. So, I tried to call the outfit I bought it from, they ain't available. So, I took it over to the engineering place here where they make things. Push it on out there. And they... So, it cost me a hundred and sixty-three dollars to move that wheel, the back wheel from where it was, leave it set there, mom, and have a seat. And because it was so fragile, there was fifteen lawsuits against the company that built that thing. And I was bound to determine I was going to have one that even I can sit on, and probably Tom too would not break it. So, this is so... Mr. Mayor, it's your chair to do as you was pleased. And I think that the fire chief would like to kind of have it. Don't laugh. It probably fits you too. So, anyway, that's pretty much it. So, if you'll call me after 10 o'clock tomorrow, I'll let you know the status of the flags for the presentation. And I want to have the American Legion honor guard there at the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Guy. Appreciate your donation. And we will see that the area agency on aging is aware of this gift, and we'll get that down there to them. And I'm sure someone will benefit from the usage of that, so... Thomas, would you mind rolling that off this side there for us, please? Next, we're going to hear from Jerry Wallace of 801 Ireland.
Yes, I'd like to pass these pictures up to you. This is the house across the street from... I talked to Mr. CJ Stevens, a code compliance officer, on September 25th and October 9th. This place is a mess across the street. And the first picture was taken on August 31st. I'd like to know if he's a code compliance officer, why he didn't see that and have them move it. This garbage cans and everything, we need to have an ordinance against that. Let's be a beautiful city. Let's step into the future and straighten things out. But the first time I talked to Mr. Stevens, he said I may go by there today. The second time I spoke to him, maybe I'll go by there today. Do not the citizens of Lowell need a better answer than that? Because "maybe" is just a word. It means nothing. It's easily forgotten. And also, I would ask that you do something to help me. My property value's dropping faster than a rock. I couldn't sell that place now if I wanted to. Also, these second item, these people continually park in front of my mailbox. They're irresponsible people. Think you can see that by the pictures. The mailwoman says, "Talk to the police." The police say, "Talk to the mailwoman." So, I'd like to ask you, do you know how many people receive their prescriptions through the mail today? And if that irresponsible person parks out there four or five days, a lot of people's going to be in trouble. I guess that pretty well does it, and I thank the council for hearing my speech.
Thank you very much, Jerry. And we will... I know that we cannot block a federal mailbox that is public knowledge. We'll check into that immediately. I know that we've had some issues around town with that, and I'll visit with the... Would you like your pictures back? Can we keep the pictures, or would you want them back?
Yes, please. Show them to the code.
Okay, thank you. But we'll check into that, Jerry. Thank you for calling both those things to our attention.
I would like to say also that they're the ones, like several months ago, that the police... the animal control officer had to come out because they had a dead dog in the backyard.
Well, we will definitely be checking on that, and I will have code compliance contact you tomorrow on our findings on that, okay?
He has never contacted me or said what he's doing.
Okay. Well, he will contact you tomorrow, okay? If he doesn't, you call me, okay? Okay? Thank you. Cindy Kangalosi is next, so... You got... It says, "I want to speak at public forum," and you're listed here, Cindy Kangalosi, 212 Center Drive. You changed your mind. You want to withhold your comments till later? Would you like for us to put a line through your name? Okay, thank you. Okay. That will close the time of republic form at six forty-seven? Okay. We have some presentations tonight, and the first one is presented by Jan Metzl. Would you please come, Jan, to the podium there and be sure and pull that microphone down to you where everyone can hear you. And she's going to be talking about a subject tonight that's very important to me and I think most everyone in the community that has...
I'm Jan Metzl. My credentials are the only woman, and the only woman or man that ever won the National Water Safety Award in this country from an inland state. And they flew Dean and I to New York.
Thank you.
And fed us for three days. We had a marvelous time there. And then, we were presented in Florida at the Power Squadron meeting, and we were presented at the Coast Guard meeting for doing water safety work on Beaver Lake and the areas around this northwest Arkansas. Since 1971, we've been going to city council meetings in Rogers. We've been going to the school board meetings. We've had a team for 12 years with special ed children, and they not only won state, but they went to the World Games and won gold medals. So, we come with good credentials. We thought we had retired last year. I told Dean when I turned 85 that I would retire. But we still swim. We swim in Beaver Lake. We swim at the Adult Wellness Center. We swim every day, and it helps keep us flexible. And I think, Guy, if you were still swimming like you used to, it would make you more flexible, too. Anyway, why we're coming and why we came out of retirement is we kept reading in the paper, a drowning. When I hear of a drowning, I cry because it's so unnecessary. We need education so that everybody will know how to take care of themselves around the water. And I thought, there's one drowning. Should I write a letter to the paper? And the answer that came to me was no. Now, that's the first time I've ever get no that comes to me about writing a letter to the paper. There was a second drowning, then a third. And I bumped into a friend of ours, and I said, "Should I write a letter to the paper?" He said, "Well, what do you think?" We usually, when we have drownings, maybe we get two or three, maybe four in northwest Arkansas in a season. I said, "Well, the answers come to me. Wait until there are five drownings," because we haven't had five drownings in a year. Not only did we get five, but then we got six. And I wrote a letter to the paper, which they published, just a little letter, about getting swimming education and boating safety, water safety, so that even if you don't swim, you will have the knowledge up here that no, never, never swim alone. And that one statement saved my life when I was a teenager. When I got these letters published or printed, we'd had six drownings of our neighbors in northwest Arkansas. And then, after I got them, we had another, a seventh drowning. We have never seen this since I lived here back in 1971. I moved, and we've never had that. There is a reason, and I think the time has come when everybody, all thinking people, must put your brain in gear and think of how we can protect northwest Arkansas. How can we protect not just the schoolchildren? We need them to get water safety, swimming education from the time they are born, because they can drown in the bathtub if you are not alert. And if you've got... Well, if you had six children like I do, how do you watch them all the time? You need to teach them, just like you teach their prayers. You need to teach them, never go near the water alone. And when I was a teenager at camp, and my parents never knew about this, I was swimming out in the deep water to the raft. But we had been trained, never, but never swim alone. Can I hear you say that? Never, but never swim alone. And go and teach that to your grandchildren and your great-grandchildren. Because when swimming towards the raft in deep water, for some reason, I could not go on. And if my buddy had not grabbed my suit and called for a counselor, I wouldn't be here today. And I would miss my six children. I would miss my grandchildren. I would miss my great-grandchildren. So, that every life lost makes us poorer around here. So, that is my plea to you tonight. You asked me to be brief. I know you all want to get home and listen to the debates. But this was so important, I wanted to be here and tell you the message. We need to think of what can be done. And our name and email and phone number is on here. And one of my neighbors said, "You don't put your phone number where people can call you." I said, "You'd be surprised how few will think of an idea and call." I'd like to change that. And our email is on here, too. What did I ask you to learn? Never, but never swim alone. If you teach all of northwest Arkansas that one thing, it will save lives. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jan. When she first approached City Hall about bringing a presentation, I said, "Please do." Many of you know that our family suffered a drowning about eight years ago, and it was devastating. It only takes a small amount of water for a child to drown if they don't know how to swim. So, Jan, Dean, both, appreciate your efforts in the community to draw attention to this. And I've got it. Never, never swim alone, okay? So, I won't, I promise you. Thank you very much. Let's give her a round of applause. Appreciate, again, what you do in the community in drawing attention of parents and grandparents about public safety and importance of swimming. Thank you. Now, we're going to have a presentation by Eric Seifried. And this is one we postponed a couple of times. And I said, "Finally, I think, Eric, we've got the time to do this council meeting." So, he's going to have it up here on the screen in a moment and get started with it, so...
Good evening. My name is Eric Seifried, Information Systems Director with the city of Lowell. We're here tonight because I want to give you a brief overview about some of the capital improvement projects taking place at the Police and Court Building. The area directly to the south of the Police and Court Building used to be a small parking lot and some green space. During needs assessment, it was decided to make this area a secured parking lot. Lowell Street Department played an integral role in making this happen. They were tasked with all of the grass removal and undercutting, setting up the light poles, putting all the underground conduit for power and data in place, all the grading, gravel, and concrete cutting, followed up by concrete finishing for the gate controllers. They also made the numerous yellow boughs to help protect all the equipment. Isolated circuits were installed at every pole, and a 30-amp dedicated circuit was installed for the emergency services command post. We wanted to make sure that there was power in enough locations to do just about whatever we wanted out there. Gates and fence were installed by Arkansas Fence Company, with the details being completed by Lowell Street's IT and maintenance departments. The gate is controlled by scrolling RFID transmitters in the emergency services and public safety vehicles. Access through the gate can also be gained by using a proximity card or keypad pin. Everyone with access has different pins and proximity tokens to ensure proper audit trails. Conduit collection troughs feed power and data lines to the secured parking area. For security purposes, all lines are terminated inside the building. Parking lot lights are wired to a contact switch that is regulated with a photo eye to ensure lights are turned on when daylight is lost. Six high-resolution outdoor IP cameras in the secured parking area are run through surge gate power protection before they are connected to the fiber backbones. Controlling access into the Police and Court Building was a top priority. Each exterior access control door was set up with a Paxton proximity and keypad reader, 1,200-pound holding force mag locks, and a high-resolution IP camera from Vivatec. The patrol area of the police department was reconfigured with some of my private work areas. I do want to say thank you to Councilman Sayer for the lead on the partitions and desks that were surplus by source gas. And a big thanks to Corporal Aaron Pyle, who had this area cleaned out and ready for me to put back together. Much, much appreciation. I had new CAT 6 lines piped into the patrol sergeant's office for data and voice to allow for the configuration of two desks in that office. Bulletproof windows with microphones were procured from Pacific Bulletproof Company, installed in the Police and Court with wall-mounted workstations and security camera matrix displays. The interior lobby of the Police and Court Building was brick to beef up security and provide a better aesthetically pleasing environment. Display and monitor was installed in the lobby to provide information about tickets, court-related info, and special events in the city of Lowell. As the city grows, so does the need for expanding the dispatch and emergency operations center. This room was completely gutted and rebuilt from the ground up. As you can see, they now have wall-mounted mapping displays, security camera displays that have eyes all the way around the building, access to Arkansas Crime Information Center, voice-over IP phone systems, and computer-aided dispatch. A lot of the upgrades going on in this room are a direct result of trying to become a PSAP in the near future. The new iRecord system was installed to replace an old, archaic, dilapidated interview system. Interviews are started and stopped with the flip of a contact toggle switch, so there's no need for officers to access the actual server anymore. Polycom video conferencing system was installed for the judge to be able to do bond hearings with prisoners at Benton County. This eliminated the need for our officers to pick up prisoners and transport them down there for bond hearings. Return on investment on this particular piece of equipment was definitely within one year between man... man hours saved and fuel costs alone. Garrett metal detectors were installed at the entrance to the courtroom to provide security screening for people entering the court. A Lowell police officer mans this metal detector. And along with this walkthrough unit, we also have two portable wands. Eighteen strands of fiber run between Police and Court Building and the data center in City Hall. This gives us nine fiber links to isolate data feeds and voice feeds, and at the same time, provide a larger data throughput using link aggregation and port teaming. This is a new full-size rack that houses all the access control and surveillance camera servers, battery backup units, fiber switches, and network routers. All of these servers and workstations had to be custom-built in order to accommodate for the massive amount of resources that needed to run this system. I would like to thank everyone associated with these projects. Without the help and knowledge from the vendors and contractors, this project would not have been successful. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Eric. I'll tell you what, this was a project that much of the funding came out of the Court Automation Fund, and it was something that was much needed. I know we made a judge very happy in completing all of this, and we're excited to have those things in place. I have visited with several people in the courts and police department and have shown their personal appreciation. It's a much safer environment to work in. And I just want to call attention, everyone, to Eric's steadfastness and his knowledge and determination to get all that done. Peter Kangalosi also assisted with all of this. Peter Kangalosi also assisted with all the carpentry aspects of all of that, and so they have done a great, great job. Let's give Eric just a round of applause. Now, keeping our communities safe is one thing, keeping our employees safe is another, and that's what much of that was all about. I'll tell you something else while we're talking about, Eric. The city of Lowell has been selected as an Arkansas Business City of Distinction winner in the Technology Advancements category. This is a very distinguished category for cities with a population of 5,000 to 20,000. There will be an article in the December issue of the Arkansas Business Journal regarding this award. It is an award that will be presented at the Arkansas Municipal League Winter Conference coming up, and I'll be asking Eric to attend that with me so he can receive that award personally. So congratulations for helping the city to achieve that as well, Eric. We appreciate that so much. Hopefully, everyone had a letter concerning that in your packet, and that has been very successful in the improvements that we have made in being able to attain that recognition and that award. Okay, let's move on to, looks like, old business. So, old business brings us to an ordinance, Amending Ordinance Number 644, Regulating Noise Levels in the City of Lowell, Arkansas. And this is the third and final reading. We have met extensively on this. We have given the public plenty of opportunity to weigh in on it, and here we are again. So tonight is the night that we make a decision to approve this. So it opened it up for discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I've actually had a conversation with a couple of the citizens from our neighborhood today, and they've all expressed big interest in having this in place so that we can move forward.
Any other discussion?
Well, I'd still like to have a motion to suspend the rules so we don't have to read the whole ordinance. So if you just entertain a motion to suspend the rule...
First.
That'd be a two-thirds vote. And after that, ask for a motion to pass.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question?
I'll allow one question, Guy.
Oh, does that go on affect the junkyard? Because I read the paperwork, he's being sued by the city of Bentonville for noise violations.
I can't comment on that guy. Thank you for your question, though. Any other discussion?
I think you have another question.
One question, Ronnie. Do you not have a copy of the ordinance? It's somewhat complex, and I would encourage you to get a copy because it depends on what zoning it's going to be, anywhere between... I'll just read them for you so you'll have an idea. All residential zones, 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. are 60; 9:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. is 55. All commercial zones, 7:00 to 9:00 p.m., 65 decibels; 9:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m., 60 decibels; industrial zones, 7:00 to 9:00, 75 decibels; 9:00 to 7:00 a.m., 65 decibels. I would entertain a motion then, if there's no further discussion...
So moved.
...to suspend the rules.
We don't need to suspend the rules.
According to Tom, we may need to do that. Explain that, Tom.
Let's suspend the rules so we don't read the thing in its entirety.
Oh, just, yeah, just to read it by title.
And of course, it's the same rule that contains the three readings and the read in the entirety. So if we just make a motion to suspend the rule, we can give a two-thirds vote on that and then proceed.
So they have a motion to suspend the rule?
Yes, I'll make a motion to suspend the rule.
Second.
So we have a motion by Eric and a second by Jeanette Lassiter. Thank you. Let's do that by roll call, please.
Kendall Stuckey?
Yes.
Eric Shine?
Yes.
Thomas Evers?
Yes.
Jeanette Lassiter?
Yes.
Keith Williams?
Yes.
Terry Sayer?
Yes.
Paula Allred?
Yes.
Dean Bitner?
Yes.
Motion to approve the ordinance on third and final reading, or motion to suspend the rules and place the ordinance on third and final reading by title only is approved, and I will read the ordinance by title only. An Ordinance Amending Ordinance Number 644, Regulating Noise Levels in the City of Lowell,
Thank you. I'd now entertain a motion for a due pass.
I would make that motion, sir.
Second.
Motion by Eric Shine, second by Terry Sayer. Thank you. Let's do that by a roll call vote as well, please.
Thomas Evers?
Yes.
Jeanette Lassiter?
Yes.
Eric Shine?
Yes.
Terry Sayer?
Yes.
Keith Williams?
Yes.
Kendall Stuckey?
Yes.
Dean Bitner?
Yes.
Paula Allred?
Yes.
This ordinance is approved, and it will be assigned Ordinance Number 919.
Liz, would you just read it one more time, just to be certain?
Okay, by title only, and Ordinance Amending Ordinance Number 644, Regulating Noise Levels in the City of Lowell, Arkansas.
I just about want to jump up and shout. What about you, Dean?
Amen.
Somebody said we just broke the decibel level, so that's what attorney will do for you right there, so. New business.
Mayor, just to be clear, we did not adopt the emergency clause, so it'll be 30 days before it goes into effect. Is that correct?
Just so everyone knows, those of you that are doing business in the city, you got 30 days' warning.
Okay, that moves us into new business. Which brings us to item number one. I think we have four items on new business. This is an ordinance specifically authorizing the appointment of the current city clerk, Elizabeth Estes, to the position of Lowell Museum Director and prescribing the extent of authority. I think we have a mis-typo right there. We just noted a typo, so.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to also see an emergency clause written into the title.
It's already in the new one.
Thank you, Terry.
Oh, and the title, in the title, yes.
Add the emergency clause to the title?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we will do that. I'll give you a chance to write that in there. Just one of the reasons that you have this before you, so we have segregation of Liz's duties as museum director because she does act as a city clerk, and we don't want any conflict of interest there in any way. So by ordinance, we can do this and achieve that. As you all know, we did pass the 2012 budget with an allowance in there for directors, so we're not having to ask for an appropriation on any salary there or anything like that.
What is?
That's already there.
What was in the budget?
It would be established at $500 per month. It's a $6,000 annual line item, so.
I thought I saw that somewhere.
If not any further discussion, you have... Anything you'd like to ask Liz? She can step down. We can bring her the microphone. You can really integrate her. But I have done so, and I'm certain that Liz has a, she has a wide range of people's skills, and I know that she has an outgoing personality, and she's willing to face some of the challenges, but she exhibits a lot of leadership skills, and we've visited there, and I think she'll fit in like a glove in this situation, and hopefully you'll support this position, so.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to move that we suspend the rules, place this ordinance on third and final reading by title only.
Okay, we have motion to suspend the rule and place an ordinance on third and final reading by Keith Williams, by second by Terry Sayer. Roll call, please.
Keith Williams?
Yes.
Thomas Evers?
Yes.
Paula Allred?
Yes.
Eric Shine?
Yes.
Jeanette Lassiter?
Yes.
Terry Sayer?
Yes.
Kendall Stuckey?
Yes.
Dean Bitner?
Yes.
This motion has been approved.
Thank you. Congratulations, Director.
Still need a motion.
Oh, yeah, I'm jumping ahead of the gun, so.
As usual.
So I entertain a motion now to approve the ordinance with emergency clause as presented.
So moved. Second.
Who was Terry, Terry Sayer?
I'll give it to him.
Okay, and we have a second by Keith Williams. You all must be wanting to hear the debate tonight. Roll call, please.
Eric Shine?
Present.
Thomas Evers?
Yes.
Jeanette Lassiter?
Yes.
Keith Williams?
Yes.
Paula Allred?
Yes.
Terry Sayer?
Yes.
Kendall Stuckey?
Yes.
Dean Bitner?
Yes.
Motion to approve the ordinance with emergency clause as presented was approved. It will be assigned Ordinance Number 920. We still need a motion.
entertain a motion to enact the emergency clause as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Keith and Terry.
Kendall, or Keith and Terry, sorry.
Is it Kendall?
Keith and Terry.
Keith, I'm getting pretty good down there, isn't it? So who was the second?
Me.
Terry, okay. Roll call again, please.
Jeanette Lassiter?
Yes.
Paula Allred?
Yes.
Thomas Evers?
Yes.
Eric Shine?
Present.
Terry Sayer?
Yes.
Kendall Stuckey?
Yes.
Keith Williams?
Yes.
Dean Bitner?
Yes.
Motion to enact the emergency clause was approved.
And you read the ordinance already, right?
We're done. We're done. Yeah, but I will.
You're going to read it one more time, just to be sure.
Specifically authorizing the appointment of the current city clerk, Elizabeth Estes, to the position of Lowell Museum Director and prescribing the extent of the authority with an emergency clause.
Thank you, and congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. Item two on new business...
That's number 920.
920.
920 is the ordinance number. Second thing under new business is a resolution authorizing the rate of property tax for the city of Lowell, Arkansas, for the year 2012 to be collected in 2013. Cindy will explain to you why we need to do this each and every year.
Because we have to. We have to send a copy of the resolution to Tyn O'Brien so she has our information every year. This is housekeeping. We didn't make any changes.
Otherwise, we don't get our...
Yeah, otherwise, we don't get what we want.
It's required by statute, isn't it, Cindy?
Yes, it's required.
And it's required so we get our property taxes.
Yes, ma'am.
I move we adopt the resolution as presented.
A motion by Jeanette Lassiter, have a second.
Second.
Second by Keith. Roll call, please.
Terry Sayer?
Yes.
Kendall Stuckey?
Yes.
Keith Williams?
Yes.
Dean Bitner?
Yes.
Thomas Evers?
Yes.
Paula Allred?
Yes.
Eric Shine?
Yes.
Jeanette Lassiter?
Yes.
Motion to approve resolution as presented has been approved. Will be assigned Resolution Number 12-14.
This brings us to item number three, which is a resolution supporting the adoption of the Northwest Arkansas Razorback Greenway Operations and Management Plan. This is a plan that the cities that are participating in this project, Fayetteville, Springdale, Lowell, Rogers, Bentonville, are asked to approve. This is an original document. I can't tell you how many pages it was to start with, but it has absolutely went through all the departments several different times. Chris Sullivan, I regret cannot be here tonight to answer all your questions, but I participated in most of all the meet, most of the meetings that concerned this, went back and forth and back and forth, and we basically landed upon a, the wording in the document and the things in the document does not expose us to a lot of financial liability. So we wanted to be sure that we didn't open the floodgates, so to speak, to a lot of obligations. And I think we achieved that and still stayed true to what their overall objectives and goals were in participating with the Greenway O and M project. So I know that that is kind of the type of reading that can be a bore, but I assure you that city officials and myself have read over it and over it and over it and over it again. So unless you have, you know, something that might be a big question on it, I'd like to...
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question.
Okay.
Why are we being asked to approve a draft?
Well...
That has blanks in it and gaps in it, and...
The draft, well, the...
That's what we were sent.
Right. Everything had a draft on it because our O and M does not look like what Springdale's does.
Right.
It doesn't look like...
But there were blanks in there, and there was one big gap in there. There were things that were deleted, and, I mean, all of it was, well...
Well, there were some sections, there were some sections that we completely left out of the document.
Right, but it had, we didn't, we didn't get a complete finished document.
You didn't get a 36-page document emailed to you?
Yeah, page 36 was blank, but yeah, I got that, but it's not complete. It's still in draft format, and like I said, it has blanks and gaps in it.
Melanie, would you like to come to the microphone, please?
You sent us a 36-page one. It was attached to the council packet, and it was 35 pages of text, but it, like I said, it was in draft form, there were blanks, and there was another section that was just incomplete, and I... Well, I understand. I'm just questioning why we're being asked to approve.
Melanie, would you come to the microphone, please, so we can get your comments before the city clerk?
I'm sorry, my legal background makes me apprehensive in approving something without seeing a final.
I know, I know. Chris is actually, she's been working on this, so I'm just, I'm not the authority on this at all. Okay. But that is what was sent for approval with the committee, and this was our version of it. This was the city's version of it. I'm not real sure what you're talking about as far as the...
I thought we were supposed to have copies here.
It's right there. There is one.
There is a hard copy here if you'd like to look at it, so.
It's about the same thing that we've got.
We had to send it as a draft form to them. Okay, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, is this something that needs to be approved tonight, or can it be approved at the next meeting?
Well, we would like to approve it tonight because they're kind of behind the schedule, and all this is wrapped up on funding for them getting their funding channels because each one of these O and Ms. with each city has to be in place before certain things happen. And we are one of the, you know, kind of puts a burden on smaller cities to devote the time to this document that some of the larger cities are able to jump right on, and most of them have been completed. And so we would like to try to pass it tonight, if possible.
Have you, can you give us a bottom line? Have you, can you give us a bottom line on the finances, because it was twenty-five thousand in one place, forty-one thousand in another, ten thousand per mile in another? Can you give us a bottom line on expenses?
Gosh, I don't have that in front of me right now, unless you can find it right there in the document, Jeanette.
Well, it's, there's, it's in a couple of different places.
I know we're working on the budget figures with that, and Cindy helped me recall that when we looked at those numbers for the Greenway, didn't we reduce, didn't we plug those in at twenty-five thousand a year, and we took twenty-five percent of that figure for this year because it's due to be completed in October of 2013? Am I thinking correctly? Okay. To answer your question then, Jeanette, on this year's budget preparation, we used the figure of twenty-five thousand per year for maintenance on, for the entire year, where they had recommended forty-one or within the forties somewhere, that may be what you're referring to.
Well, yeah.
And then so this year's budget, we've actually set aside twenty-five percent yet to come before the council to approve when we do the 2013 budget.
Mayor, what would that, that be, that money be set aside for, for the mowing and sealing, or what exactly?
All types of things that come up with the trails. And it can be signage, you know, being torn down, it can be a bench, you know, that somebody kicked the slats off of and needs to be, just general maintenance.
They're gonna be lighting throughout the trail?
No, there will not be. Lighting is a different issue, so...
Well, I know, talking to people, what I hear on the, from folks from different cities is that Lowell has been the holdup on this trail for some time, so...
Well, and it's...
I don't, I try to rebut that with saying that's not the case. We've had some issues with some landowners not giving up, so it's not the city.
Yeah.
That's what is my understanding.
We have been behind this and been supporting it, and we've been a part of the process all along. We, we have all cities had a very problematic area with Puppet Creek and Gold Springs Road joined because of the creek and environmental issues, and the engineers had three or four plans of getting through that area, and it was just very problematic to get a twelve-foot wide trail through that area. That's been the stall. It has not been the other aspects of the trailway at all.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I...
Yes, ma'am. Recognize Jeanette.
I'm, I'm unclear on this, there's a, you don't have a copy of it in front of you?
Not in front of me, I do not.
Okay, it talks about annual maintenance costs, the annual budget of twenty-five thousand for fuel, materials, repair, et cetera, et cetera. And then, in another section, it talks about total annual maintenance cost, one mile, ten thousand dollars, and then total annual budget for Greenway, forty thousand.
I think that's suggested, isn't it? Did you look at the wording prior to that?
Are those the recommendations, Mayor?
Yeah, right. See, so much of this, what they do, they take that O and M...
It doesn't...
Maintenance, uh...
It says anticipated costs. It says anticipated...
Yeah, but we're not obligated to that.
Well, where does it say that?
That's why we put the figure of twenty-five thousand dollars in there. So up to twenty-five thousand dollars.
Tom, have you read this?
I've read the sign portion, there was a separate portion regarding signs. My, here's my understanding though, Jeanette, is that that's not a binding contract at this point, the resolution isn't binding. I think what they need is an agreement in principle to get all the cities to say, we are going to maintain that section of trail that's in our city, but my understanding is also, from looking at another document for another city, is that funding for maintenance is also gonna come from the foundation throughout the life of these trails. In other words, cities won't just be left out dangling on their own to take care of their own problems, especially if something catastrophic happens. That's been my understanding. I don't think that the resolution is binding, nor do I think that document has a place for the mayor to bind the city financially. Even if it did, he would have to have a, he'd have to have an ordinance, most likely, and make sure it was in the budget to do so.
Okay, then, and just one other thing that I wanted to point out is that it does have blanks, referring to the miles of paved ten-to-twelve-foot wide hike bike pathway and blank miles of on-street system.
Okay, I think we missed, probably missed that, and Eric, maybe you can help me, that, when we worked on that, wasn't that two-point-two mile of trailway section on that? I can't hear you.
He said he couldn't remember exactly.
Okay.
He shrugged.
As, as I understand it, the, the draft form that we got is probably the same that all cities get.
Until we begin to cut and slice and throw away and get it down to where it's something that we feel that we can obligate ourselves to the city.
The forty thousand is their recommendation. We are committing ourselves to twenty-five thousand dollars annually, a quarter of that this year.
Mm-hmm, this coming year.
Okay, and, yes, I'm sorry, this coming year. And Tom, if I understand you correctly, we're not on the hook for anything here. As you've said previously, what the council does, the council can undoes.
Correct.
So with that, with that said...
Dean, that document is, and the signage document as well that I reviewed with, with Chris, that what they're very interested in doing is making sure they've got a uniform system of operations and management.
Yes, sir.
And the key is for everyone to sign on to a common set of standards, and that's what the document is really meant to do, is to get everyone to buy into, when you walk across city borders, the trail is still gonna look the same.
Yes.
And it'll look the same the whole length throughout, no matter what city you're in. That's, that's the key to that document. We're not yet at the point where the city is going to be on the hook for funding.
Right. And the last thing I want to do is be the fly in the ointment for this whole, for this whole program, so...
My, my thought process is, you know, if they're asking us twenty-five thousand dollars a year to maintain it, which is part of our duties as a city, it's going through our, our city, and it's, we didn't pay anything for it. You know, I, I would hate to say that we would say no to this and they'd say, okay, it stops here because of that amount of money. So, I don't know, with that, I would, I would say we'd move forward and...
Well, well, Tom was right when he said there may be other forms of assistance, financial assistance later, but if there's not...
Yeah.
You know, so that's about what it's gonna cost us to keep it maintained, understanding that price is also including a, what they refer to as a trailhead, which will be a facility on five acres, it'd be kind of a mini park and a separate building for meeting and restrooms and things like that. So that is calculated in there. Now, in the original form, there was a vehicle list, and there was an equipment list, and there were all these employees that they were, but they, but what they told us was we start with that with everyone. I mean, this, this is ideal. Now, you trim it down to what you think that, that you all can do and what you can afford. And so we've batted this back and forth with Chuck Flink, that's leading this project over and over and over again, and I know in its last draft that we sent to him and that Chris was corresponding with him on, he was quite pleased with it, and all the department heads have been quite pleased with it. Yes, there may be some blanks on the mileage that we've missed on there. I believe it's two-point-two miles, but we can certainly fill that in correctly before we send it to them with that understanding, so...
Certainly, Ms. Lassiter's point's well made, and if there's one thing I've learned from attorneys, that if it's not written, it didn't happen. So I, I appreciate Jeanette's position, however, trusting, trusting our mayor and certainly trusting our city employees, I make a motion to approve the resolution as written.
Do we have a motion by Dean Bitner?
Second.
Second.
Second by Terry Sayer. Let's have a roll call vote, please.
Terry Sayer?
Yes.
Kendall Stuckey?
Yes.
Eric Shine?
Yes.
Jeanette Lassiter?
Trusting our city attorney that it's non-binding, yes.
Dean Bitner?
Yes, ma'am.
Paula Allred?
Yes.
Thomas Evers?
No.
Keith Williams?
Yes.
This motion to approve resolution as presented is approved. Resolution is assigned number one-two-dash-one-five. Resolution number twelve-dash-fifteen.
Twelve-dash-fifteen?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. That moves us to item number four, another resolution. Well, this resolution is to approve and authorize a sublease of the previous lease, excuse me, of a portion of Wardnell Park for the continued development and operation of the Lowell Senior Center and other improvements to the Office of Human Concern. I would describe, I would describe this, and Tom can jump in here at any moment and give some better clarification. This is more or less a housekeeping issue between the Office of Human Concern and the Area Agency on Aging, and the fact that we are the ones that will be writing the leases connected with it or renting the property to different identities, this needs to be in place. So we were asked to do this by them, so if you've got any other questions, certainly entertain them, and we'll have just a discussionary period here, so...
I move we approve.
You move that we approve it?
Approve the resolution as presented.
We have a motion by Jeanette Lassiter?
Second.
Second by Eric Shine. Let's have a roll call vote, please.
Keith Williams?
Yes.
Jeanette Lassiter?
Yes.
Thomas Evers?
Yes.
Dean Bitner?
Yes.
Eric Shine?
Yes.
Paula Allred?
Yes.
Kendall Stuckey?
Yes.
Terry Sayer?
Yes.
Motion to approve resolution as presented is approved. Resolution is assigned number one-two-dash-one-six. Resolution number twelve-dash-sixteen.
Thank you. That's moving us into our committee reports, and we did have a meeting with the Budget Committee. Keith, would you like to bring us kind of a summary of that meeting, please?
Yeah, we, we met briefly, just to, what was it, Thursday night?
Yes, it was.
And we just, just to kind of go over some concerns about the 2013 budget, about just, you know, how we wanted to head it out, some, some items we might want to include in it. It was a fairly brief meeting, I think we'd also discuss some personnel changes, and that's basically it.
Okay. Are there any other committees that have met since our last session at the report?
And generally, in the past, we've all been notified of the committee meetings. Is there a reason we weren't notified of that meeting?
No, um, we probably just failed to do that, I'm sorry. We'll, we'll make note of that and do better.
Thank you.
Okay.
And I think Cindy, I'm gonna send her some, well, she had my notes, I think we just didn't get them typed up into minutes of that meeting, and we can give those to you. So we'll provide minutes to that meeting. The real answer is, Jeanette, it was all top secret.
Well, Melanie is losing her sweetie of the, of the week award, because she says she did it.
Minutes to be sent.
If I can say that, I thought we all, like, some of us volunteered to be on certain committees, so I mean...
Yeah, but we usually get notified of the others in case we want to be there.
I'm on the Budget Committee, so I was there.
What did you tell me?
She called me three times, and she did a great job, I appreciate the calls, so I was there.
Okay. We'll see in the future when the other committee meetings are meeting, regardless of which committee meeting it is, that all the council members are aware of that meeting, okay, in case you do want to attend that. And you will get minutes on this last meeting, so Jeanette, expect those.
Thank you.
Okay. That brings us to announcements, and gosh, we've got a list of several here. Probably one of the most, I won't say the most important, but it's definitely exciting when you get a check. Each year, the directors of the Walton Family Foundation ask Arvest Bank of Lowell to advise the foundation about standing charitable organizations in their community to which they might be able to provide assistance. This year, the City of Lowell has chosen, or was chosen, the funds are designated for improvements in Lowell's Wardnell Park, specifically to help fund a stage for community events. This generous five-thousand donation will go a long way in building the stage, and we're extremely grateful to both the Walton Family Foundation and Arvest Bank of Lowell, and I think you will see my letter of thanks, giving and gratitude to them in your packet. And I have almost a carbon copy, but Cindy said she already cashed their, or deposited the originals, so there it is. So we are very thankful to the Walton Foundation and their continued support of city projects. They help us out immensely. By the way, with Wardnell Park, we, I and Jim and several others spent a portion of the morning out there staking it, so we're gonna add that money with some other money and begin that project. Later, we'll be asking the council on the 2013 budget to approve the remaining money that we will need to finish it up next year, but we're gonna be starting construction on it right away.
Is this another stage?
No, this is a stage we approved last year.
Oh, I mean, in addition to the one we already have?
We don't, don't have one.
A pavilion or whatever?
We have a pavilion.
This is staged.
Okay, so it's gonna be an actual stage.
This is take place of the trailer we always lease and those types of things at our events in Mudtown Days, and so it's gonna be quite an addition to our city park. Second item under announcements, mayor's appointment of Ray Drummond as a director of Lowell Animal Shelter. Randy, would you like to come up at this time?
I've been asked to say a few words about Ray Drummond. Ray was hired on April third, 2006, as Lowell's Animal Welfare Officer. For the past six years, the needs of the animal shelter's multiplied and grown, and Ray's been successful in meeting all those needs. New shelter was built in 2010 with help of the staff and volunteers. I feel it's one of the best in Northwest Arkansas. Ray was chosen as Lowell Police Department Employee of the Year about 2006, 2008, and was chosen as City Lowell Employee of the Year in 2011. I feel that Ray is competent, capable, and certainly well-qualified for the appointment as director.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Like, I have a lot of them tonight. How does this affect, will he be in a supervisory capacity?
He will be.
So how does that affect Becky?
She will still be employee of the Police Department.
So he won't supervise her?
That's correct, ma'am.
Okay.
As many of you well know, last year, Ray Drummond was selected by employees as the Employee of the Year, and we congratulated him on that, and we hung his plaque up proudly there in the hallway, there at the entrance of City Hall. He's a model example and employee for public service. He's always, since I've known him, demonstrated all the qualities we need in leadership. I'm very thankful that we have an individual like Ray to extend this directorship to. I'm very proud that I can officially refer to him now as director. Ray, why don't you come up here and let me shake your hand, buddy? We're all happy for you. That brings us to another announcement. We've got more announcements, believe me, tonight than we do business, I believe. We've got a whole string of them here, so bear with me. Reclassifying job description for the parks maintenance su... with me. Reclassifying job description for the parks maintenance supervisor to include trail maintenance. This position, as you, you have that in your folder, correct? And so you've seen the description that's related to this function and this capacity, and this, I believe, the city is ready to make this move based on several facts, and this is what was kind of determining factors for your mayor. We know that the Resorbeck Greenway is going to be completed if it stays on schedule. This is hard to believe, and we don't even see a spade of dirt being turned out there, but it is supposed to be completed by fall of next year. So, within a year, that project's going to be done. It'll have a five-acre trailhead there with a park. There's also the possibility of another section of property out there being used for another park purpose that the foundation is looking into. We also have a piece of property that was recently gifted to the city that we'll be making at some point a public announcement on that could also include some ball fields and soccer fields and those types of endeavors on, and just several different things that are motivating us to pick the parks position up and to also include trails. So, this, this trail designation along with parks makes a lot of sense, and so Brad Long will be leading that department, and he'll be leading it under Jim Hendrix supervision. So, that's, I wanted to make that real clear. So, any questions about that?
I guess to the reclassification of the title, does that mean that more pay will be paid to this position, or is it just saying that that's just clarifying the duties?
Right now, just a reclassification of duties. In fact, we, through the budget process of 2013, we'll visit that and look at that, but he will be continuing this once given that classification at the same pay that he's currently receiving right now. Now, at some point in six months, we need to revisit that and to entertain meeting probably an appropriate salary for that, so. Any other question? Okay. Mayor's appointment of Jim Hendrix as Public Works Director. You're probably saying, my goodness, Mayor, what are you doing? We really believe that this, some of these changes are very necessary where we are with city government right now, and Jim, he does such a fantastic job at what he does, that we wanted to make very clear that in this position, that he is, will now be over the parks and trails director, and over streets, and also maintenance issues. So, he will be our Public Works Director. And of course, all of you are very familiar with Jim, and knows what a good, know what a good job that he does, and the performance levels that he continues to display. So, anyone have any question about Jim's designation there? Okay. Well, these are things that I'm required to make you aware of, and I certainly want to be transparent about it, so if you have any question, be sure and ask me, okay? Update on mayor's findings regarding acquiring the Benton County Water Authority Number Four. We have... Tom is probably going to make a few comments here as well, but I just want to share with you what my feelings are at this point. You know, we've been looking at this for several months now, and Tom was moving forward with some of the bond requirements and so on and so forth, and we looked at Garver's inspection on this, I think, last council meeting, and as I have went out and visited with several individuals that have experience with rural water systems all across the state, and once I took some of their advice and looked back at this report that we had, I can't in good faith recommend that we move forward with this. The valuation, for example, did not include any fire hydrant pressure testing, which was a concern. Looking inside the valve boxes at the depth of the water valve, some water mains have minimum pipe cover less than two feet, which is suggesting possible freeze damage. A minimum depth of pipe covers three feet, and three feet is generally recommended. Probably the thing, the two things that began to make me really think, okay, do we really want to get in the water utility business? One being is that they have a 20% and 18% water loss over a 12- and 24-month period respectively. And so, that began to tell me already that we were going to have to invest in that system, and it is a 12-year-old system. And further, there, the material that was actually put in the ground, there were some concerns about that as well, that they didn't upgrade that material, they put just what was required there. So, I am thinking that we just need to release this. We looked at it, we did it due diligence and let it go, and I'd like to kind of get a little bit of feedback, even though this is an announcement, that I'm kind of backing away from it unless you think we should proceed with it or would like for me to go any further with it. I intend to drop it.
Well, if I could go next, and just to follow it up for all, you know, what do you, what do you call it, disclosure, I was on, I'm on the commission for that, and I wanted to let everybody know that I would be recusing myself from any votes. I have no really opinion of it, so.
Mayor, you told us previously that some of the pipe they'd used was less than recommended. They'd used some plastic pipe and the like that was not recommended, so...
He specifically addresses that the waterline pipe material used was thinwall PVC ASTM standard pipe, in general, either AWW standard C90 PVC or AWW AC151 ductile iron pipe is preferred.
Right. I certainly don't want to take on cleaning up someone else's mess, so I think it's probably best to, to walk away from it, and certainly appreciate your efforts to research it as thoroughly as you did. That's, that was a trap we could have easily fallen into.
Well, I wanted to be sure we knew what we were purchasing, and as we looked at that, become apparent, you know, if they were to make improvements with this and do some upgrades, and that water loss was down there between the 5% and 10%, you know, we could consider it, again, at a later date. But right now, in its current condition, I don't think we, we should entertain it at all. So, that's, that's my announcement concerning Water District Number Four, okay?
Mr. Mayor, you're going to let them know that, or if you would send me that information, I can let them know that, because they did ask for me to bring whatever news I've heard to it to the next meeting, which will be in December?
We actually have a letter prepared for Steve Lewis to go out of my office tomorrow, unless I got an impulse from you all to reconsider it. I plan to send that letter tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
And I had, I was in communication with Cassie, because I was working with, I was about to start work with Mark Dossett, I mean, literally that day that I was notified by the mayor's office to hold up. We've worked with some with Shep and done some, sort of getting ready to do the work, and so Cassie does know.
Okay.
And I made sure she passed it on to Craig as well.
Okay.
So, they know.
Thank you, Tom.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd just like to comment that it's probably a good thing that she wasn't on the agenda tonight to being introduced, but we do have our third director of the Senior Center now. She's not here.
No, she's not.
Of course, no. If she was here, it would jinx it, but she does plan on staying, she says, but we've, this is our third in as many months.
Her name is Jerry Hager.
Yeah, yeah. Remember, I told the last one I was going to kick her in the shins if she left?
Well, this one is experienced. She's been a assistant up in Bentonville for quite a number of years, so she knows what she's getting into.
And everybody there loves her, by my understanding.
Yes, and she said there's no way they can get her to leave, so.
Out of curiosity, why did we lose the second one?
Must be a rowdy bunch, I think, right?
I don't know. I would let the mayor address that if he wanted to.
I have nothing to say.
But the one in Bentonville and the one here both were gone in the same day, so.
Wow.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I do have one, I have a couple of announcements, actually, and I apologize for the first one. I don't have a lot of information. It was a citizen came to me and told me about this event. I guess Lowell Elementary is having a fall festival. The PTA's putting that on, and that's November 10th, it's a Saturday. I've got an email address. I don't have any times or anything, but if anyone's interested in getting involved with that, you can contact, send an email to loweleimentary@yahoo.com. They're needing a lot of help, I guess, and they were kind of wondering if the council would be interested in volunteering their time. Again, that's Saturday, the 10th of November, so if you guys are interested in getting involved with the elementary school, I guess they need some help there.
Okay, thank you, Keith.
And then the second one was, I, this morning, I received several complaints about an explosion on the southern part of the city, and I'm sure we don't have anything ready tonight to discuss, but maybe at the next meeting, we can have some kind of report or update on that, on what happened.
I think we are ready with the report on that. CJ, why don't you come and fill everyone in what our investigation into that today revealed?
Well, CJ, co-compliance officer, received some complaints today while I was at a class in Bentonville, and looked into it from several different ways. When I got back to the city, actually made some phone calls to verify a few things. There was an explosion today. I would like to ask some people on a scale, some that experienced it, on a scale of 1 to 10 comparative to others, what would that number be? Would anybody like to speak to that?
You heard it?
Anybody else?
Where were you when you heard it?
And we're talking about explosion. Where was this explosion? Do we have that isolated?
That will be, I'll divulge that in just a moment.
Okay.
So, you say a five, Mr. Guy? Center Drive, okay. And eight, Ronnie, where was you at? Where was your location when you seen the eight?
Heard the eight.
Heard the eight, felt the eight?
CJ?
Yes.
The text message I got at 9:52, I'm sorry, the text message I got at 9:52, quote-unquote, "explosion felt throughout neighborhood today at 9:31 a.m., worse than yesterday's because the houses all shook today." So, I'm assuming that'd be a high number from one of the residents.
And a second complaint of explosion?
I got pretty much the same.
I'm sorry, sir?
And a second complaint of explosions in today?
Yes, sir, apparently there was one yesterday and one today as well. I got a call on the one yesterday.
And I haven't had the time to put into it to find out about yesterday's yet. However, I did concentrate on today's. There was actually two events today, according to the source that told me that they were pretty sure they were the culprit. I did ask the owner of USA Metals to investigate their operation from the timeframe of 9:15 to 9:45. Can you speak to that?
Hello, my name is Tom Smith with USA Metal Recycling. CJ did call me both for yesterday and today, and we brought video of the time period from 29 cameras at our location that showed no explosion from our site whatsoever. And I'll be happy to show you two at a time this video, but only two at a time, so it doesn't become a FOI event.
Can I ask a question? Mr. Tom, was yesterday's explosion claim, like I said, I hadn't really had time to look into that one, was yesterday's explosion, anything you could find from your site at all?
We had no evidence of any type of explosion from our premises, both today or yesterday at all.
Okay. I don't have the police report and the fire report in front of me at this time.
I have it.
However, I did read them. I did read them. They did say that there was claim of a airbag explosion from the USA Metal site yesterday, okay? However, today being the one that I concentrated mostly on, on a lead that I received from individual, I looked into it and made a few calls, and I called the McClintock Acre Sharps Query, and they did have two blasts today, one at 12:15 and one at 9:30 a.m.
Nine what time a.m.?
9:30 a.m. They are sending me email back.
Where's the location of that at? Wagon Wheel Exit, Puppy Creek.
Oh.
Is that monitor just off? Is that, is that what's going on? We don't have a remote for it?
And, and to divulge on that a little bit more, to further our investigation, I plan to talk with also the Rogers Group Query, which is approximately, well, it's 2.88 miles from this location. The other query is three miles from the location, as the crow flies.
And I didn't hear this, I just would like to hear it though. Mr. Breland, where did you say you were when you heard the explosion today? Well, you saw it?
You gave it an eight.
Oh, you felt it to a, to a level of an eight?
Mm-hmm.
And, okay, where were you when you felt it then?
To where?
It's JB Hunt.
What was the name of that quarry over there, CJ?
The quarry that I was able to speak to was McClintock Acre Sharps Query.
Now, I have family...
I spoke with Wally and Derek at that location.
I have family that lives across the street, basically, from this quarry, and they were contacting me about an explosion in the neighborhood because they have rental property in the neighborhood. They didn't say anything about an explosion yards from the quarry. That makes me kind of question.
Well, let me add this, because I think it's relevant. Debbie Mitchell came by to visit me right after this. What time was that, Debbie? Yeah, someone there. And knowing that, you know, these explosions that Tom is so quickly recipient of that, I went on a crusade of my own right after I visited with you, Debbie, and I began to canvass the neighborhood all over to the east of here, and without exception, and they did not know why I was asking the questions that I was asking, but each of them, I asked them if they experienced any loud noise or anything yesterday or today. Without exception, they all did, as far out there as the end of Apple Blossom Road and those areas. And I asked them later what times, and the times reflected the times that the complaints came in, both yesterday and today. At one point, I lived there on Burrell Place, and I can tell you that we had issues with that quarry for years, and these were not just loud noises, I mean, these were things that shook the house. I mean, that vibration, just like what some of you feel. And I truly believe, after my personal investigation, it has nothing to do with USA Metals at all. Every, everyone that I asked this afternoon told me it came from that direction. So, these quarries dynamite, and that may be something we need to visit with Springdale about now that they have that annexed into their city limits, because they shouldn't be able to use that strong of a charge, that it's not only affecting that side of the city, but also right here within the city.
Mr. Mayor?
With all confidence, I can tell you, I don't think USA Metals in this case.
I would like to add a comment. I probably, out of everyone in this room, live closer to that quarry than anybody else.
Right, you do.
I just text my wife, and she said, yes, why? 9:34, because I got a text on my phone saying about an explosion.
9:34.
I can tell you that it will wake us up. My dogs go berserk. I'll be working in my office, and it'll, I'll almost... I almost, you know, I don't know, uh, it scares the wad out of me, I'm just telling you what happened. Because it, and things shaking, like, and it's over.
Mr. Mayor, though, notice I didn't mention any business name, I, I just brought that forward. That said that there were complaints.
Well, we, we knew there would be complaints, and we have been giving our undivided attention to them all day long. And we, uh, we want to give the information that we're finding. We, we want to be transparent, we want to be fair. And in this assessment, uh, CJ has done his job. And, um, I got out and I found out some things that CJ did not know what I was doing. I've not had contact with him until I came up here to City Hall. And I've not contacted Tom, not contacted Debbie since Debbie kind of motivated me this afternoon. I said, "I'm going to get out here and find out what the heck this is, what the heck's going out, out here." And, uh, um, Tom, you're not the culprit in this case. It's, it's Sharp, it's Sharp's quarry, so it wasn't today, so.
No, that's, that's absolutely true.
Yeah.
Yes, and, and Mr. Mayor, having said that, what I did say, I did get, I did receive a, I, I worked with, uh, some people that live in South Fork that haven't been to the city council meeting. Uh, and I, I did have a complaint today about trains being loaded up at USA Metal at eleven o'clock at night, and it was very noisy. And, and I have, I've had received that complaint, and so I will just bring that forward.
Well, that's, that's one we continue to get on the trains and, basically, when we talk to the, the railroad yards.
They were still loading trains.
And that's someone that hasn't been here.
The trains were still hooking up cars.
And it was, I guess it was pretty noisy the other night, and, and the person that I, that was telling me this has a child, and luckily the child sleeps, I guess she said the child sleeps through a lot, so, but anyway, I just want to bring that up. Also, we need to, I, I mean, I, I don't know how, I thought, I thought we had limitations on the operation of USA Metals, so I'm not sure, um, if that's being enforced or not. But I know that, I thought business was supposed to stop at five o'clock.
Rail, railroads is a separate company, a separate identity, and they're, they function by their own schedule and deadlines, so we've chased that rabbit several times.
Mayor, if, um, the, the text that I got stipulated that the explosion that they heard was at nine thirty-one, so I think we can pretty easily tie it to Sharp's Quarry. The explosion yesterday, was it also same approximate time?
My email says twelve-ish, and I'm going to look into that tomorrow.
That's when they blasted, or that's when they heard the explosion?
I haven't followed up on yesterday's yet.
Oh, I see, okay.
I will continue, even on today's, continue further.
Okay.
Um, because I haven't had a chance to talk with Tom about his findings.
Yeah.
Um, on what he had at his site. I just, um, wanted to let people know that what I did find, so.
That, I think that really illustrates how hard it's been to wrap our arms around this thing and, and, you know, we, we've talked about it being herding cats, trying to put this ordinance together. And that's, that's a perfect illustration of how difficult this thing is to manage and, and even to regulate, um, to, to write the ordinances that govern it, so be patient, folks, I understand your frustration, I don't, I don't like it either, but.
We're making headway, though.
Absolutely, we are.
That's, um.
Mr. Mayor, back to, back to the railcar, though, uh, conditional use is a conditional use, and, and if it says no business will be done after five o'clock, I mean, regardless if it's a railroad or whoever, um, I don't, I don't know why we couldn't enforce that, um, because i- it was agreed upon. I mean, it, you know, we did, it was something that we worked out with the railroad, but again, I think that if we, if, if, if the, the business that went in says no business will be done after five o'clock, regardless of what other parties are involved, I would think that you couldn't enforce it. But I'm, Tom probably knows more about that than me.
No, I was just thinking that we talked about that in that committee hearing, I remember.
So we addressed that in, in that last committee meeting, I can't remember if that's in your letter or not.
There's an email from the railroad that says they can ask, but we're going to operate on our own schedule.
Right, we'll come when we come, but, um.
Yeah, we can't tell the railroad how to operate their business, but what Keith's saying is, is we're having, we have businesses that we're regulating by these decimals and their, their own agreement to have their work scheduled. So, I mean, how do they get to continue to work until eleven o'clock?
That's not what I understood they said, I understood that they said the railroad was picking up cars, I was like.
Well, they're being loaded and picked up at his, at whatever business that get, you know, spurs off of that railroad, right?
May I address the council?
Go ahead, go ahead.
I didn't understand that you were told that we were loading the railcars, the railcars were being switched out.
It's my understanding the railcars are being loaded, and, of course.
A, a lot of times when they, when the train comes, and we, we can't schedule that, we've, we've certainly attempted to, they'll switch our railcars out in the middle of the night, two o'clock in the morning, all times. But, but we don't load them at night.
So after five o'clock, you guys, you have no staff there loading them?
Well, if, we may stay up until five thirty if there are people in line, but, but the operations people know that they need to be finished with the railcars, loading the railcars by five o'clock PM, and we've, we've enforced that with our staff.
Okay.
So I'm sure what you're hearing is that the railcars come in, and it makes a horrendous noise because they park railcars right along the, um, the, the neighborhood, they disconnect the train, and then they switch our cars out, and when they connect them and disconnect them and then reconnect on the main line, it, it's like thunder.
Okay, well, it was a complaint that I got today, and I, and I-
I understand, I just want to clarify that we're not, we're not operating, uh, past the designated hours that have been set forth.
Okay, Tom, I appreciate that.
Just to be clear, I mean, and, and both Toms, um, if, if he were loading railcars past five o'clock, then he'd be in violation of the conditional use. Am I understanding that right?
That's my understanding, Dean, but I think that Tom's agreed.
That he's not doing that.
Letter that he's not going to do that.
Right, right.
And I'll be more specific, because we have the area to the north at Smith Logistics that doesn't fall under the, the conditional use. So that doesn't fall under the conditional use, and it isn't recycling, so they could very well be loading or unloading or, or, but not processing material on the north, four acres. However, we, we've not done that with, as trying to be good stewards with our neighbors.
On, on that property, about what time do you quit loading and unloading? I'm sorry?
We, we shut down the operation the same time. The only operations that we have going on after five would be just maintenance operations, which are de minimis.
Okay.
Thank you, Tom. Selena, did you have something to say? You already walked up here.
Here, can I ask you a question?
So.
Yes, I was just going to say what Tom, what Tom said to clarify, loading the cars would fall underneath the conditional use, and that's business that would need to stop at five. We had extensive discussion, we had contact with the railroad, you know, um, truly, if, we, we cannot impact the railroad. So how do we tell him that the railcars can't be picked up after five? There's just, there's no way. So, you know, his alternative is, do you not use the railroad? I mean, we, you know, so we had no, really no alternative, but we did have extensive discussion about it.
Selena, I, I'm just going by what citizens have told me, and, and, and I was just told that they were being loaded, and, and that was my concern. Um, you're right, we can't control the railroad, what they do, but if they're being loaded up after five, five-thirty, then.
Well, you know, and, and that may be a misinterpretation on the wording, loading material into the railcar versus the engine loading up the railcar, it may just be the words used, I don't know. But that, that's the differentiation, if it's something that, um, that, uh, USA Metal is doing, then that would fall underneath the conditional use.
And I, and I'll say this about the railroad companies, I mean, I'm not trying to defend anybody, but I'm understanding, we can't even make them cut their grass on their property, that I think is funny, all other citizens have to maintain their yard, but they don't have to maintain theirs. But my thing is, the lesson that we've got to learn, I just want to make sure that we all hear it, is in the future when development comes and they want to build houses on the railroad, since we, if we have businesses that rely on the railroad to ship their freight, I understand that. If we have businesses that may have not and may now be complying, everybody appreciates that. But it seems like if we would have enforced a somewhat of a distance that you could have residential, not you, I'm just, I'm just saying that if we make sure in the future, and if you're hearing those projects that people want to put residential homes, I don't care if it's triplex, duplex, whatever, next to a railroad, we need to either make sure we have a great buffer, so that would alleviate a lot of this as far as the railroad operations, people hearing the train, people, you know, hearing noises from businesses, because we, unfortunately, we're at this point, we all have to kind of work together, and there's no way to correct some of the issues that may be out there, but in the future, we need to really watch that. No reflection on you, I'm just, I just wanted to say that, you know. I like to hear myself talk, if you haven't figured that out by now.
Well, and I think that we do, in planning, try to do buffer zones between industrial, and, and, you know, we don't have much industrial in the city, but try to build those buffer zones in, and, and, um, you know, we will keep that in mind.
And if, and if we're done with that subject, if I have a chance to say a couple of things?
Well, believe me or not, believe it or not, I've still got two, three things here, so.
Thomas, is it about the railroad?
You all had asked me.
Is it about the railroad, or?
It isn't about the railroad, it's two quick things, and I'll be done for the evening.
Go ahead.
First of all, I don't know who, who reiterated a couple meetings ago, I think it was Terry about the putting a yield sign there at, at the intersection of Goat Springs and Mill.
That's been changed.
It's been changed, and I appreciate Jimmy for working with Rogers and making that into a four-way stop, even if that's aligned to be directly across from each other, in the future, I still think it should remain a four-way stop. Um, glad it got done, even though when I first said it, it didn't get done, it got done now, so I appreciate that. Uh, second thing, and I know this is everybody's favorite, when we talk about the budget. Last year, and I guess I'm forgetful of things, I know that Mr. Stuckey had asked about getting the budget somewhat ahead of time, so that we could actually start reviewing it in this meeting that we're at tonight, is the sixteenth, and no budget that I can see in front of me. So when would we be getting that budget, so we can start reviewing that?
We are actually wanting to get together as soon as possible, we're ready to have that meeting, so. You want to meet after this meeting tonight?
Hey, I'm missing what I wanted to watch.
Are you ready to set a date?
Uh, Cindy, would you, what date are you thinking? Yeah, so, so we got to set a work session, would you like to go ahead and do that now?
Sure.
Okay, get your calendars out, go to work. While you're getting your calendars out and finding some dates, let me just kind of report a few other things under announcements. Uh, you all had asked me to bring you an update on the mayor's, uh, findings on the McClure properties. We are, uh, waiting for an appraisal from Reed and Associates. Sean Ingram has been working on that, and we should have that within two weeks. Um, another item, Lowell City Council Candidate Forum. Uh, you want to be here for the candidate forum? That will be coming up, October twenty-second.
Next Monday.
Uh, six PM, we will, I think most of the candidates are here tonight, I see, uh, Robert and Matt and Guy.
Thank you.
And Ronnie, who else am I missing?
That's everybody, Terry.
Terry Sayer. So we encourage the community to come out and support them and, uh, help us get the word out for that, okay? Uh, another item, uh, that's hosted, of course, by the Rogers Lowell Chamber of Commerce, that'll be six PM. Um, update on the Lowell Senior Center, uh, Jeanette had already pointed out that we have a new director there. Uh, we have been meeting with, um, some things regarding the punch list, but we've been told that, uh, once, uh, Jerry Hager is ready to kind of move the seniors out of City Hall, we're ready to occupy that building, however, we cannot do any food preparation in that building until the Health Department signs off on the kitchen, in which we are waiting for some additional funding to complete that kitchen, so that's going to take place relatively soon, probably this week. Uh, as far as a ribbon-cutting ceremony, we have not set a date, but expect it probably within three to four weeks, okay? Anything else? Calendar dates for a work session concerning the budget, somebody lay one out there.
Thirty? Twenty-ninth?
Hmm, I may not be in town, seriously.
Twenty-ninth works.
I'll have to go argue.
You may not be in, in town.
I may have to go to up to North and take, take a project, take a project through the city.
Want to move into November? Does that help you?
I think so.
You may need more than one meeting.
Absolutely, how about November first?
Nope.
Okay. November sixth. Tuesday.
Uh, that's election night?
That's election night.
Oh, it is too, isn't it?
Yes.
November seventh, Wednesday, church night.
Seventh, we're discussing the seventh of November.
That works.
Is that, anybody have a conflict with the November, with November seventh?
Y'all good with that?
Six PM.
All right.
You want to have it at six, or you want to meet?
And it probably won't go beyond seven, so that'd be good.
Six or six-thirty?
Six.
Okay.
Here at City Hall?
Okay.
Six o'clock at City Hall on November sixth, okay.
November seventh.
Seven. Uh, I was going to be a day early. Dean, did you want to talk about your garage sale?
Yeah, there's a couple of things, Mayor, if you don't mind, um, several. Christmas party, December fifteenth, for city employees, um, we are on track with, for that, correct, Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, it's a Saturday, December fifteenth, for all city employees, um, Planning Commission and, and everyone, and so, uh, we are on track with that. Uh, just in the interest of full disclosure, there is no city money being used, it's all private donations, so that's why we can call it a Christmas party and not a holiday festival. Tonight is ice cream night, uh, for those of you that are interested, the debates are on, who cares? That's a waste of television time, so we'll go eat ice cream?
Agreed.
I'm just kidding. Ice cream, ice cream tonight, the debates will replay, I'm going to watch it too, I promise you. Something that some of us have kind of kicked around recently is, uh, is putting together, I've been talking to Melanie and Karen and some of them, and, and the mayor, and, um, a citywide, um, garage sale weekend. Um, a holiday from garage sale permits for the weekend, et cetera, et cetera, promote it through the city's, uh, email and, and, uh, newsletter, uh, and even go so far as advertising it in the Star Shopper, where, uh, if you want to have a garage sale in the city of Lowell, and you're a resident of the city of Lowell, we do it all on one weekend. It's not going to preclude you from doing it any other weekend, but I think it will draw a good number of folks to the city, um, who will dine in our restaurants and buy fuel at our stations, et cetera, et cetera, so, um, we're kind of thinking the date, um, Melanie, correct me if I'm wrong, April twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh, towards the even, end of April. Um, I think it'd be a wonderful opportunity for us to show off our city, uh, make the park available for those folks who live in, uh, apartments or, or mobile homes and the like. Um, allow them a vendor area at the park and do a garage sale, uh, event out there, and it'll give us a chance to show off our city and draw a great number of folks, so, um, we're looking at that, if you have any input, two six three Dean, two six three 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 two six, call me. Ordnance Committee meeting, those of you who are on the ordinance committee, I really appreciate all your efforts on the, uh, uh, noise ordinance, again, a lot of work and a lot of hair pulling on that deal, uh, for some of you, not me. Um, but we need to meet again, we have a couple of things to talk about, specifically the sign ordinance that I was asked about last year, um, and, or earlier this year, rather, and then, um, I'd like to amend our current yard sale ordinance to address signage, um, and, uh, what to do about all these yard sale signs that are left on corners for months on end, so want to address that. So if you will huddle up right here after the meeting, and let's talk about scheduling an ordinance committee meeting. And last but not least, um, the, uh, four fifty-seven B deferred compensation program through Nationwide, um, that we've talked about in the past, uh, the Nationwide rep Fran Walker is asked to address the council, so with your indulgence, I'd ask her to be here in November at the council meeting, if that's acceptable?
With your pleasure.
Just to kind of give you an overview of how it works and who's eligible and so forth and so on?
What'd you call it, Dean?
It's Nationwide, uh, Deferred Compensation Program. It is cost neutral to the city, so that's, that's a good thing there, it gives the, uh, employees an opportunity to participate in a four fifty-seven, uh, which works like a 401K, um, and it is not a matching, uh, city contribution. So if, with your indulgence, I'll ask her to come speak to us if she's available, and if she can't do it in November, then we'll postpone it till December. Um, but kind of like to give you all, uh, um, an overview of it. I saw some really, really, really good return, um, so far this year, uh, in my, about nine percent last quarter, so it's doing quite well, so.
Oh, would, would you let us know as soon as possible?
Yes, sir.
Whether she can, okay.
Would that be something you would notify the employees if they wanted to attend? So they're aware if, if we went that direction? If the city offered it?
I just want you to see what it's about, and then if the city decides to adopt it, whether we do it through Nationwide or ICMA or whoever else it is, um, but just kind of want you all to get an understanding of how it works. Certainly employees are encouraged to be here and.
Mayor, can I ask for an update, and maybe it's from Melanie, putting you on the spot? The, uh, the gym membership, what's, whatever has come of that, is anything? Oh, another meeting? Okay.
Was I the only one that signed up? I'm just curious. Because I kept looking for something to be deducted and I haven't seen it and I was just like, well, maybe something will show up in the mail.
To the microphone.
Gosh.
Wow. We have a chair here if you get tired.
We originally had, I think, twelve people, is that right? That were interested in it. So that's what we presented. And they've dwindled now, so we have less than ten. So that's going to cause, that may cause an issue. So she's going to meet with us, Cindy and I, and see if we can work out something that doesn't cause problems on both ends. We haven't forgotten you, I promise. But if there's anybody interest, I got you, I got you. If there's anyone else who's interested in the membership, let us know.
Was there an email?
Yeah, there was an email. You didn't.
Why were you looking at me?
This is like three months ago email. Hey, we have another volunteer right here, we can go to eleven. Or wait, does that make us ten?
You? Okay, good.
Okay, Keith, you're, you're on the record.
All right, sign them up.
I got you signed up now.
It's all about being healthier.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you, sorry.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
How soon, or actually for Cindy, I guess, how soon will we be able to get a copy of the draft?
The budget or the draft? The budget, yeah.
Okay. Well, it's like three weeks until the meeting, but that's a good time for studying and working on it, so.
We had it to you in a week, would that suffice?
Oh, yeah.
Jeanette, okay. We'll try to get it to you by this next Monday. Think we can do that by next Monday? Is that too, too big of a time constraint on us?
I'd be able to see better.
Okay. Okay, okay. We'll try to have that to you Monday or Tuesday this next week, okay? Trunk or treat, as most of you are aware, that First Baptist Church does that. There's bulletins in the, the City Hall receptions desk on this. And there's also a concert, if someone might be interested in as well, something at Wardnell Park on the twentieth. So if you'd like to pick up information on that, please feel free to visit the receptions desk on those items. One last thing.
I thought you said that before.
No, no, I have not said that. Everybody kept jumping in there. I'm really trying to relieve you of the debate tonight, it's one really was. Anybody have anything else and we'll close with this one, going last, okay? Local business was chosen as one of the nation's fastest growing private companies. Central Research Incorporated and Lowell ranked seven hundred and three out of a nationwide list of five thousand incorporations in ink magazine.